Okay, you guys ready?
Yes, sir.
Okay, I'll call the other Sparks City Council meeting of March 25th, 2019 with a roll call, please.
Mayor Smith.
Here.
Council members Abbott. Lawson. Anderson. Bybee.
Here.
Dare.
Here.
City Attorney Adams. City Manager Crutz.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, Ryan Gonda. There he is, hi Ryan. Ryan Gonda from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints, if you all stand for the invocation, please.
Our Father in Heaven, we thank thee for this day. We thank thee for the opportunity that we have to gather together as citizens of this great city. We thank thee for our city council, for our mayor, and for the employees that do such a good work. We pray for them. We pray that thy Spirit may be with them to strengthen them, to give them health and strength, and to guide them in their work. We're grateful for the free country that we live in, and for the Constitution, and for the blessing it is to exercise our rights and to enjoy the freedoms which we enjoy each and every day. We pray that thou will continue to bless our land with the water that we need. We thank thee for all these blessings and ask for these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bishop. If you remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please, Ms. Bybee, would you lead us?
Absolutely. Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Come on. Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment period. Anybody in the public wishing to speak, would you please fill out a card? I do have one speaker, Lindsay Adams. Come on down, Lindsay, welcome. Just come around here and grab a seat right in front of one of those microphones. And you have three minutes.
Okay. Hello, my name is Lindsay Adams. I'm the Director of Community Involvement at the Sparks United Methodist Church, which is located on the corner of Pyramid and Audi. I'm here today to ask the city council to consider offering temporary business licenses for events that happen on non-City of Sparks property. As I understand it right now, all businesses that do business within the City of Sparks need to have a business license. But sometimes we want to be able to offer festivals or craft fairs on our property. I would like the council to consider allowing vendors to come in for a one-day event and pay fifteen dollars for that temporary day, for that temporary event, instead of the hundred and nine dollars, I think it is, for an annual license. So, that is what I'm asking for you to consider.
Okay. Ms. Crutz, would you get ahold of her, please? If you give them some contact information?
Okay.
I thought we did that, I thought we did that, too.
What I understand is that we have, you guys have the availability of temporary business licenses for events that are on City of Sparks property. But nothing for private property or anywhere else. So, that's what I'm asking, is that it extends, oh, excuse me, that it extends out so that we can have more availability.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Do you need anything else?
Nope, well, good. You need to get him your information, though.
Yes, sir.
Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? You got one right here, come on down, sir. Oh, I'll take it. Thank you. David.
Yes, sir.
Welcome.
Well, I can't tell you how glad I am to be here. My name's Dave Schwatter, and I've been a resident of Sparks for about the last year and a half. I'd like to thank this city council and all the previous city councils for everything they've done to make it such a wonderful community. To that end, I am starting a social media site to highlight all of the family activities that are accessible within a one-hour drive of 580 and Interstate 80. And I would like to coordinate my videography at Luxis, though. There's a good chance I will be the lead videographer for the Tahoe Pyramid Trail group. And I'm gonna be, that'll just be one of the things that I'm highlighting. And I would like to have a contact point with the City of Sparks to ensure that everything I produce in videography, because it's gonna go up on YouTube, and I intend to do everything I can to get the kind of people to move here that we all know deserve to be here. So I'd like a contact point with the city and to help me and to help me ensure that everything I do is aligned with your initiatives and interests.
Okay, we can have somebody kneel again?
Yes, sir.
If you get information, he'll give you your contact point.
Certainly will, and thank you, everybody, I really enjoy living here.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Where'd you move from? I don't care, I don't care how they do it in California. It wasn't a trick question, it just, uh...
It's a right question.
Okay, anybody else in the audience wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the council. Looking for approval of the agenda?
Moved or approved? Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, we have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, or please vote.
Okay, my screen is out, so I'm an eye. Can I get Julie? Lisa?
Okay, so it passes unanimously. Yeah. Okay. Six point one, the minutes. Consideration of possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks City Council meeting for March 11th, 2019. Anybody wanna pull anything or corrections? Looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson. Okay, we have a motion, we're looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, announcements, presentations, recognition items, and items of special interest. First one up is seven point one, Nevada Veterans Memorial Commendation. Bill, are you gonna come up and accept this?
I'd be delighted to.
Okay. Have a seat right up here. This is kinda near and dear to all of our hearts, I think.
So.
I think so. Okay, Sparks Commendation. Whereas the mission of Nevada Veterans Memorial is to preserve and honor the legacy of our fallen servicemen and women since 1864 by building a new memorial plaza for the entire state located at the Sparks Marina. And whereas, in order to fully thank and memorialize the military who have given their lives so we can be a free nation and state, all current eight-hundred-and-ninety-six servicemen and women, and those in the future, will be honored and respectfully remembered. And whereas, there will be an educational path around the whole walkway to help today's generation and all generations to come understand the story of our freedom and the lives that were sacrificed for it. And whereas, this memorial is for the entire state of Nevada, with every county represented and every military branch honored. And whereas, there will be a stage and event area for all military and community groups to gather in celebration, this property will always serve as a place of reflection, learning, and honor. Now therefore, I, Ronald Lee Smith, Mayor of the City of Sparks, do hereby join with the city council in commending Nevada Veterans Memorial Team for their tireless efforts in bringing such an important memorial to our city.
You have ten million people watching this. I wanna make sure they can hear you.
Well, thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much for this honor and for all the work that you've done in helping the memorial come to fruition over these last four years, five years that we've been working on it. We're very excited about the progress that we've made. We're looking forward to this Friday having our groundbreaking ceremony. I'm hoping that you and the rest of the community can turn out for that. I think we're expecting a crowd, and it should be a lot of fun. The project, for those people who have been involved in it, is really near to their heart. There's just so much that goes into it. People care, there's an awful lot of passion. And there's a lot of respect for those who have served and who've continued to serve to make this country great and safe. Thank you very much.
Bill, what time is the groundbreaking ceremony?
It's ten o'clock Friday morning at the Marina.
Okay.
And there'll be some light refreshments there, I believe, as well. And we're, we'll have a lot of parking assigned for everybody, so they'll have room to go ahead and get in and get organized and enjoy it.
We should have a big crowd there. We have these wonderful pins right down here in front. If anybody would like one of the veterans' memorial pins, and just holler Bill and he'll get them to you, or come on down and grab one. Thank you so much, Bill, for all you do, because if you don't know Bill DiCarvanel, he volunteers for everything. He's the guy that says, "Oh, I can't do that," and he ends up doing it, so... We certainly appreciate you, Bill.
Well, I think I'm like that other guy from that other state.
Yeah.
And the last fourteen years have been fantastic for me here, too. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks, Bill.
Thanks, Bill.
Okay, seven point two, proclamation for Fair Housing Month. Christopher.
Yes. Our proclamation reads, whereas April 2019 marks the fifty-first anniversary of Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, the Federal Housing Act, which provides equal opportunity for all Americans in the sale, rental, and financing of housing, and prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, religion, sex, national origin; and whereas, the Fair Housing Amendments Act of 1988 added familial status and handicapped to those classes protected by Title VIII, and added strong new rights, remedies, monetary penalties, and judicial and administrative enforcement procedures; and whereas, Nevada state law also prohibits discrimination on the basis of ancestry, sexual orientation, and gender identity or expression; and whereas, it is the solemn and sworn duty of government at all levels to defend the rights of all citizens and oppose housing discrimination whenever and wherever it occurs; and whereas, illegal boundaries to equal opportunity in housing, no matter how subtle, that diminish the rights of some of our citizens, diminishes rules of all; and whereas, Silver State Fair Housing Council actively works to ensure equal housing opportunity for all people in Nevada to freely choose where they want and can afford to live; and the City of Sparks supports the efforts of Silver State Fair Housing Council and other agency pursuing fair housing. Therefore, I, Christopher Dare, in honor of Ronald Smith, our mayor, and everybody else here, we declare April 2019 as Fair Housing Month. Is somebody here to accept this?
Come on down, George.
George, you worked so hard at it. You gonna tell us all the good things going on?
Good afternoon, everyone. George Graham, Housing Specialist. I did invite my consultant, but maybe timing. But yes, this marks the fifty-first year of fair housing, and it's an honor, a part of my duties to implement all the fair housing initiatives by the city, and I appreciate the honor. And I don't see our, my consultant.
It's all good, I'll stand with you.
George, you love your tie.
Oh, thank you.
You guys do great work, and if you'll get up and take a picture with Christopher? Thanks, George.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a presentation update on the Flirty Delivery Systems and Testing Program. Who is doing that? Come on down, sir. And give your name for the record.
Good morning, Mayor Smith. City council members, my name is Jason Reader, and I am the Director of Government Relations for Flirty, drone delivery company headquartered in Reno. Okay, so today I'm gonna be providing an update on the Federal Aviation Administration's Unmanned Aircraft Systems Integration Pilot Project. It's a mouthful. But Flirty has partnered with the City of Sparks and the City of Reno on this project. But before I begin, I wanted to provide an overview of Flirty, our pioneering achievements for context, should anyone here or anyone watching online not be familiar with our company. There we go. So Flirty is a drone delivery service whose mission it is to save lives and improve lifestyles by making delivery instant for everyone. As I mentioned, we're headquartered in Reno, and we've built safe drone delivery and logistics technology by hiring industry-leading aerospace engineers and employees from companies including NASA, SpaceX, and many others, including the University of Nevada Reno. Some of our quick pioneering achievements of Flirty include, in 2015, we conducted the first-ever FAA delivery in the United States. That drone is going into the Smithsonian Air and Space Museum right alongside the Wright Flyer. 2016, we conducted the first ship-to-shore drone delivery of medical supplies. That was in partnership with John Hopkins University's School of Medicine in New Jersey. In 2016, again, we conducted the first FAA-approved drone delivery to homes in the United States. One of those was in Hawthorne, and there was seventy-seven other deliveries with 7-Eleven right here in Reno. They're right next door. And in 2017, we raised investments from leading investors in Silicon Valley to commercialize this technology, and that's what we've been working on to this day, so... Now that everyone has some background on Flirty, I'll jump into our Unmanned Aircraft Systems Integration Pilot Program. So in 2017, the President directed the Department of Transportation to establish a three-year program to accelerate the safe integration of UAS into the national airspace system. This program partners the FAA with state, local, and tribal governments, as well as private sector participants, and will assist the FAA with creating new UAS regulations and rules. In November 2017, the City of Reno unanimously passed a resolution supporting the program, and in December 2017, right after, the Sparks City Council approved, the mayor sent a letter to support this program, as well to the Department of Transportation. So out of twenty-eight-hundred interested parties in the program, the FAA viewed one-hundred-and-forty-nine competitive proposals and awarded ten awardees nationwide the ability to participate. Our IPP was one of the ten selected. The City of Reno is the lead participant. Flirty is the lead team member, providing the drone operational support. And the City of Sparks is also a team member, along with many others. And I'll share the other team members on the next slide. But the mission of this IPP is to deliver lifesaving medical defibrillators and conduct commercial package delivery in the region. The reason why we chose to focus on AEDs delivery is because cardiac arrest is the leading cause of natural death in America. And when cardiac arrest patients wait to receive defibrillation, the odds of survival drop substantially for every minute that follows. By deploying AEDs via drones, because drones don't have the same traffic obstacles that ambulances have, we could potentially save, we could potentially increase cardiac arrest survival rate from ten percent to almost fifty percent. So specifically, Flirty's delivery drones will integrate into REMZA's 911 dispatch system, provided AEDs dispatch via drone at the same time an ambulance is dispatched. And according to our data, in real alone, based on just deploying one Flirty drone with an AED, we have the potential to save at least one life every two weeks. So as you'll see here, we have an impressive group of public and private entities included in our IPP, including local police and fire departments, REMZA, a medical center, and many others. Regarding our approach of implementing the IPP, we're instituting the crawl, walk, run, fly, soar gradual approach, which aligns with the same approach employed by the FAA to ensure safety. And currently, Flirty is conducting flight operations testing in a safe rural environment in northern Nevada. So we've received several regulatory approvals so far throughout this IPP. One was announced just two weeks ago. These approvals allow Flirty to begin testing certain flight operations not previously authorized by the FAA. They include flying at night, flying multiple drones per operator, and flying an aircraft beyond the operator's visual line of sight, which is crucial for the future of drone delivery. Flirty is making tremendous headway with the approvals, needed to accomplish the IPP mission, and we continued fast-track approvals from the FAA for the remainder of the program, which expires in October 2020 unless extended. So as such, we're ramping up communications with the public and are actively working to educate the public about the program and how the program can save lives and benefit the community. The City of Reno and Flirty and the rest of our programs, our program participants are included in our program website, which includes resources about the IPP, videos and news releases, a signup option to receive regular updates, and feedback options for the public to share questions and comments. We also plan to conduct more informative meetings with the public and local stakeholder groups, like official meetings like this, and other numerous outreach efforts. So again, thank you very much. We are very appreciative of the mayor and the Sparks City Council for supporting this program, being supportive of innovative technologies in general, like the ones that employ Flirty to conduct these missions. And we wanna just thank you all and just remind you that our region is paving the way for drone delivery of lifesaving emergency medical equipment and commercial package delivery. Thank you for supporting this program.
Thank you, Jason. We do have some questions. Ms. Bybee.
First of all, I want to commend you for what Flirty is doing in the community and that we really are a leading, leading the way in the country, that being one of few in the whole United States. I was just back at National League of Cities, and I'm on the Transportation Advocacy Committee, and I was talking to them about what's happening with drones here that other states are extremely interested in because of the potential. I'm especially interested in the AEDs, the defibrillators that you'll be sending, because I know from personal experience, I'm with American Airlines, and we were the first ones to have AEDs on our airplanes a long, long time ago. And the amount of lives that can be saved is critical. I guess my only question would be, on the AED deliveries, will there be a community-wide education so that people, when the drone, I know what to do, because I'm trained as a flight attendant, but so if, you know, my neighbor who doesn't know what to do, a basic... I mean, and the AED really, you know, it's all, it tells you what to do, it talks to you, it's written down. But I mean, will there be some kind of partnership in the community that you can educate people, that if they get an AED, what they're supposed to do with it, so that they can respond even quickly, more quickly?
Sure, absolutely. And we're still planning out kind of how we're gonna start engaging with the neighborhood advisory meetings, maybe as we start to, you know, start selecting future operations based off, you know, approvals, once we get them from the FAA, we'll start to target those areas. But yeah, as far as the AED, we're trying to choose ones that, you know, will speak to you or have language, but certainly start educating the community on how to use AEDs, so it's not a foreign process to them when an AED does get delivered. And we're working very closely with the City of Reno on how we're gonna do that. We're gonna talk with the rest of our partners on how to, you know, with the City of Sparks, what is the best way to do it in the community here? And probably, you know, probably getting REMZA out there as the professionals and kind of learning how they do that with the community, too.
Mr. Dare.
Yes, I just wanna, one, say as a health board, on the health board, we have talked, seen some of this stuff, and it's pretty amazing. And I know REMZA is very excited and really does believe this is gonna be a very important thing, especially in the rural areas is the key, getting there. I have two questions, it might seem funny. One, how fast do these things go? And also, where'd you get your name? Where does Flirty come from? It means something different to me growing up, so...
Well, our founder could probably tell a much better story than I could, but the name, at the time when the company was founded, drones were pretty much just used in a military sense. They hadn't really come on commercially that far yet. So Flirty's a very fun name, very, very safe. We want to, our mission is to, you know, save lives and improve lifestyles. So we just wanted a very fun name that everyone can kind of get behind, and that's where Flirty came from, and I'll have to work on the story. But as far as the speed of them right now, current regulations from the FAA limit drones to a hundred miles an hour. There are much more regulations as far as how high you can fly, where you can fly, you know, avoiding airspace and all those things. But as far as a lot of the specifics on our drones, we kind of keep that confidential at the moment for competitive reasons. I'm just gonna leave it right there, but I'm more than happy to set up a meeting with the affair and invite you over to Flirty, and you can see what we're working on.
Cool, that'd be fun.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you very much, appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to consent items. Anybody wanna pull one? If not, looking for a motion? Mr. Lawson.
Moved or approved consent items eight point one and eight point two.
We have a motion, looking for a second, Mr. Abbott.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna clear out these chairs now. General Business nine point one, administer the oath of office to newly appointed City Manager Neil C. Crutz. And we're gonna do that right now, Neil.
It's on this side.
Hi, say your name.
Hi, I'm Neil Carmichael Crutz.
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
Do solemnly swear or affirm...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
That I will support, protect, and defend...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
The Constitution and government of the United States...
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada...
And the Constitution and government of the state of Nevada...
Against all enemies...
Against all enemies...
Whether domestic or foreign...
Whether domestic or foreign...
And that I will bear true faith...
And that I will bear true faith...
And allegiance and loyalty to the same...
And allegiance and loyalty to the same...
Any ordinance, resolution, or law...
Any ordinance, resolution, or law...
Of any state notwithstanding...
Of any state notwithstanding...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
And that I will well and faithfully perform...
All the duties of the Office of City Manager...
All the duties of the Office of City Manager...
Of which I am about to enter...
Of which I am about to enter...
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Congratulations. You want the whole council up here, or just...
Sure.
Yeah, let's get the whole council.
Thought we just did one.
I thought we did that.
Well, now we got his...
This is redo.
I know it's a lot of work.
You look so good. You dressed up.
Let's get up.
I'm not having water bottles this time either. Someone else's. You honor two of the water bottles again.
Don't hurt yourself, though.
Oh, I don't?
Yeah, I was totally...
I do this short end all day and day.
Yeah, away from the water bottles.
Thank you. Congratulations. Why don't you introduce your family?
Yes. Since I'm going down to present the next item.
Okay.
Council members, you've met my wife, Elizabeth, before, but you haven't met either of my daughters. Right here is my daughter Grace. She is a student up at UNR. And my daughter Sarah, who is also, she's a graduate student up at UNR, and Sarah will be graduating this May.
Yay, congratulations.
I wouldn't be here, wouldn't be doing these kinds of things if it weren't for particularly...
We know this, we know that, Neil.
Is she particular with me? And knows when to tell me to stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Now it begins, Neil.
Yes, sir.
Now it begins. So we'll move on to nine point two. Consideration and discussion and possible approval... Let me say something? I'm sorry. Possible approval of an expenditure to share costs for the temporary homeless overflow shelter with the City of Reno and Washoe County in an amount of not to exceed thirty-two nine fifty-one. That was the figure I was talking about. Go ahead, Neil.
For the record, Neil Crutz, your City Manager, happy to be here today. As you've mentioned, item two deals with the temporary homeless shelter that was constructed in Reno late last fall. Both Washoe County and Reno have asked that we share the expenses that went into that. The original budget for that was, the original bid for that was a total of ninety-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-two dollars. That included one item that, as it turns out, was not purchased or installed, and that is the flooring there. So that drops our total cost down to just under seventy-five thousand dollars, seventy-four four eighty-two, for anybody that's keeping track of the actual math. And this has been an item of conversation, you know, at the council level in the past. As a matter of fact, my predecessor, Mr. Driscoll, presented three funding alternatives to the SEHAB meeting last November. But it's an item that this body never took action on. So our partners at the City of Reno and at Washoe County are asking us to help share this burden with them. So I'm gonna walk you through here very quickly the three alternatives that were developed last fall. Alternative one would just simply split the costs in equal thirds. And then that would just be that seventy-four... thirds, and that would just be that $74,852 divided three ways, or now just under $25,000. $24,951 would be our share if we were going to pick up an equal one-third of it. Alternative number two, which is actually the alternative that I've recommended in my staff report that you consider, would be based on our traditional population base, where Washoe County, the folks living in the unincorporated area add up to just over 110,000 people. The city of Reno is just under 245,000, and we were just under 97,000. Now, those are based on the state demographers' numbers for July of 2017. That's a good set of numbers to share this on. And that would have us picking up about 21% of the bill, the city of Reno picking up 54, and Washoe County, in as much as they're representing their unincorporated lands, would pick up the remaining 24%. And our ask there would be $16,054. So that would represent the 21% of the total cost. And then the third one was done in an effort to try and characterize the way that taxes flow to us as they come down from the state. So trying to kind of mimic the way revenues flow. You've heard before that we get, in terms of the sales tax that flows to us, anything generated in Washoe County, we get in that 11, roughly 11% range. And that is loosely based on a modification of how you count population, where Washoe County now would pick up everybody living in the entire county. So at that point in time, you've got just under 452,000 people to count, the same 245 that live in Reno, and the same just under 97 that live in Sparks. But it artificially, you know, blows up the population, if you will, to just under 100,000. But again, that's based on how the revenues flow down to us as they come, and simply represents the, you know, the low end of the possibilities that we've put in front of you today for you to consider funding. So in terms of possibilities, there, I've lined three here, and that's what's up on the spreadsheet on the screen there. And of course, there is a fourth alternative, and that is to not fund it at all. So you've got a do-nothing alternative, and then you've got three levels of funding. I did structure the title of this so that you had the full range of possibilities. If you want to come up with your own type of measurement here today as to how to get there, you have up to that $32,000 number that's actually in the budget, should you choose to do so. With that, I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that you've got.
Okay, questions or comments, Mr. Dare?
So this is a conversation we've had quite, quite well, even at the SEAB meeting, and I have the honor of getting to chair that, Ed's on that, and then Charlene is alternate, but we all very much are talking and looking at what needs to happen. My ask is, with all of this, in the conversation we've had with the region, we've talked about this being a one-time final way to approach it, third by third by third. I would ask that we do that. Part of it, we're leading the conversation at the table, we're making strides. I do believe we're at a great place of making some great decisions. Even April 1st, I'd encourage people to come out and check it out, and it's going to be an interesting conversation. It won't be the only conversation, a lot more to come. But, and then I'd say in the future, I do believe we need to make sure that everything we're doing is equitable, that it has to do with population, but I would actually prefer that we look at the tax base, because the county, I do believe, do take a portion of what is supposed to be taken care of, this kind of need. It doesn't mean they have enough money to do everything that needs to be done, and that's why in the future, there might be some things that come back to us, but it needs to be fair and equitable. Right now, we're in the middle of making plans, and so for us, I think it's best if we come to the table, we're at the table, we're leading conversation. So that's why I ask that we do the third, a third, a third. That'd be my recommendation, and.
Mr. Lawson?
I think this is a teaching moment, too. If you look at alternative one, where we pay a third, a third, and a third, the city of Sparks, per capita, we pay two and a half times more per person than the city of Reno, and seven times more per person than the Washoe County unincorporated area. This is an equitability thing in the future that we're going to have to talk about. The fair way to do it is, since Washoe County gets the first $138 of all your property taxes, and then the city of Sparks gets 96 cents roughly on top of that, they're going to get the same $138 at the county, so all our citizens in Sparks should count as Washoe County citizens also. At this point, the commissioners don't feel that that's an equitable way to do it, even though they're receiving the money that way. So I'm with Christopher, though, for this particular deal, I would just say, let's just do a third, a third, and a third, and get it done. But we have to have this longer conversation in the future, so the citizens of Sparks are not being unduly burdened by these simple, quick maths that, oh, we'll just split it three ways. Well, that's not the way we're receiving our taxes. If we want to go to splitting it three ways for taxes, hey, I'm good with that. We'll take our full third instead of our, what is it, 11, 12 cents. So it'll work out a lot better. But for this argument, let's just get it funded, let's get it done. We've got a lot to do in the homeless area. I think we've made great strides. I think it's one of the few boards that we serve on, where we're actually getting cooperation between all three entities, and we're moving forward. So I'm thinking the light of, let's be good neighbors, and let's move this down the road, let's do the third, but we need to have this conversation long-term with the other two entities.
Okay, Ms. Bybee?
Neil, I have a couple of questions. On the total cost, $98,852, does that include, has it been adjusted for the floor that doesn't have to be purchased again, or is that total different, or is that in the final?
The total without the floor is different. The total without the floor is $74,852, and our share, if we're to split it equally, would be $24,951.
So it would not be the $36,000?
No, it would not be the $32,951.
So the amounts that we're looking at today would be adjusted. If we're going to make a motion?
Yes.
The amount, so the amount if we split it one-third?
Would be $24,951.
$24,951?
$51.
$51. Okay, that answers one question. I have a problem with the equal, you know, one-third, 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 because of what Ed said on the taxes that we collect, and the number of our citizens is so dramatically lower than the other two entities, and the fact that Washoe County does get tax dollars for social services, and this is social services. But I agree also, the homeless situation is something that we share among all three jurisdictions. It's important, we're trying to make some headway on it, the SEAB and all of us coming in as good partners to try to resolve the issue is critically important. I still feel Washoe County bears, the responsibility as the social service, you know, agency of this region to be doing that, and that Reno and Sparks have come as good partners to try to facilitate that. So the one-third, if we did the one-third, it'd be $24,000. Philosophically, I feel, I like your recommendation on alternate, well, it's not alternate two on this, or it is, yeah. The population-based would be, what would be our amount on the new adjusted amount if we did alternative two?
That would be $16,054.
$16,054. Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? For me, I think by going one-third, this time only, this is a one-time-only payment, right?
Yes, sir.
So if they come back next year, we will have to vote on it again?
Yes, you will.
It's a good faith gesture on the part of City of Sparks to get this done and get it going, and they're doing some good work in at SEAB. And I forgot the rest of what I was going to say, how about that? The third, I think we should go with that time, so. Any other questions or comments? Okay.
Does Ed have another?
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay, Mr. Lawson?
I'm going to make the motion that City of Sparks participates in the funding of the warming shelter for last year, because it's officially closed now, isn't it?
It closes the end of this month, sir.
Okay. For this year, in the amount of $24,951, representing a one-third equal share with the other two entities.
Would you add on to your motion, please? This is a one-time-only.
This is a one-time-only expenditure. Any future expenditures will have to come back to this council.
Thank you. Okay, looking for a second, Mr. Dare?
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion, Ms. Bybee?
I still believe that it should be by population, but considering the rest of my fellow counselors and the mayors' recommendation that we be good partners, and I hope that the other two jurisdictions, especially Washoe County, are very cognizant of that, because per population, we are giving more per capita than the other two are, but it is an important problem that we do address, and so I'm willing to support this even though I don't agree with it.
Okay, any other questions or comments, Mr. Dare?
And I just want to commit at SEAB, as we walk through this, that is, I mean, if you've been in those meetings, they're very clear that we think this way, and that there's no confusion, I don't believe, on our jurisdictions end of what we think about this. But with us leading forward, this, I believe, is a wise thing.
Seems to be the conversation for everything.
It's a bigger, it's a bigger conversation.
Yes. If you really look at it, when we're paying seven times more money per capita than the Washoe County resident, unincorporated resident, and two and a half times more than a Reno resident, there's no fairness in that at all.
So I just want to make sure it's clear that people know, we know, and people know that we are moving forward, and we are making this, the clarity is, the pool is getting clearer, I believe, in conversation. We have a few more conversations to go, but we're walking in the right direction, I believe.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none, please vote. Passes, you can answer me. Thanks, Neil. Okay, 9.3. Consideration and possible approval of appointments to the Sparks Building Code Board of Appeals for staggered terms to be filled from the following pool of applicants listed now with practical order. Frank Bedart, Mark Dewise, Don Mackey, Brett McElhaney, Matthew Myers, Andrew No, and Mike Picorno, and it's Mr. Mark. How are you, Mark?
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, Mayor Smith and council members. For the record, Mark Miranda, building official, Sparks Building and Safety Division, Community Services Department. I'm here today for consideration and possible approval of appointments to the Sparks Building Code Board of Appeals. In 2002, the City of Sparks City Council enacted ordinance 2153 establishing an independent board comprised of five persons to hear appeals of decisions made by the city's building official regarding interpretations of the building code. Ordinance number 2153 specified that subject to availability of qualified applicants, the Sparks Building Code Board of Appeals shall include members with education and/or experience in architecture and engineering and construction field. After reviewing the applications, I recommend to the city council appoint Mark Dewise, D.R. Harden Construction Service Manager, Don Mackey, who is a registered engineer, longtime registered engineer at City Sparks, Brett McElhaney, a registered professional structural engineer, Matthew Myers, a registered professional mechanical engineer, he actually did the mechanical upgrade on our city hall, engineered it, and Mike Pecorino, a registered professional electrical engineer. So thank you for your time, and I'll answer any questions that anybody might have.
Okay, questions or comments? Mr. Dare?
My only question is, they're on 18-month terms. Are there other people already on this, just so they're staggered, so we're not losing all the institutional knowledge after 18 months?
Leave the motion.
I'm sorry?
Yes, Councilman Dare, that, they're going to be staggered in two-year, 18-month, and one-year terms. So when we re-up them, that we won't, we won't lose all the.
I'm sorry. I didn't catch that. Thank you, Ed.
No, no problem.
I have my friend Ed up here, he, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Anderson?
I was going to make a motion to approve if there were no more questions.
Go ahead.
All right. I move to approve the following persons to the Sparks Building Code Board of Appeals. Mark Dewise, Don Mackey, to two-year terms, Brett McElhaney, and Matthew Myers, to 18-month terms, and Mike Pecorino, to a one-year term.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Lawson?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Now, we weren't hard on you, were we?
Thank you very much.
You're looking sharp, by the way.
Yeah, you look good in a tie.
That tie, the suit is everywhere.
Are any of them here, Mark?
Pardon me?
Are any of these nominees here?
Uh, no.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks, Mark. 9.4. Presentation, discussion, and possible approval to amend Appendix A in the Mid-Management Professional and Technical Resolution, updating the classification and compensation system following review by HAY. The estimated cost of the general fund is $2,692 in FY '19, $5,744 in FY '20, and $9,076 in FY '21. The estimated cost to other funds is $3,290 in '19, $5,720 in '20, and $4,139 in '21. It's all up to you, Mindy.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor and members of city council. Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, for the record. On September 10th, 2018, city council adopted a new method of classifying or paying positions of the city of Sparks. This new system is called Corn Fairy HAY, or HAY for short. As part of the adoption, HR outlined a process to review positions that were negatively impacted. The first rounds of reviews were completed in November. This item addresses the second round of positions re-leveled by HAY. The criteria for this group were the resolution employees whose positions were affected negative 15, between negative 15 and negative 5%. Twelve reviews were sent to HAY, and additional five positions were added because they were either part of a job family or in a similar level. When reviewed by HAY, there are three possible options. First, the positions level may go up. The second one, the position level can stay the same. And finally, the positions level could go down. In this review, nine positions went up and eight stayed the same. No positions went down. This agenda item relates to the Mid-Management Professional and Technical Resolution. HR is seeking approval to change the Appendix A based on the HAY's leveling recommendation. Appendix A reflects a positions that went up in this resolution. The other one is the next agenda item in the executive resolution. The financial impact of this change in this fiscal year is $2,692 in the general fund and $3,290 in the other funds. Moving forward with appeals or job evaluations, HR has begun working with our HAY consultant to set up the committee to establish pay ranges, and that will be, the committee will be trained in the HAY methodology. And with that, I can answer any questions you may have.
Okay, any questions or comments? Ms. Bybee?
I just had one on, for the fiscal impact, is quite a bit more significant two years down the line? Is that just something we're going to have to budget for? Because this year compared to two years from now is a big jump, but is, will it just be budgeted in our general expenditure budget?
Yeah, we're part of the budget process. I'm starting even this next fiscal year, finances put it in, has put it in the budget that you've seen. And then also, no one is getting an increase as a result of this agenda item unless their merit review date is coming up. So none of the people in these positions get an automatic increase. They're eligible for a increase at their merit review, and if their supervisor feels like they've been performing, then they're eligible up to 5%.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, any questions, Mr. Dare?
Ready to make a motion if you are, sir.
Go ahead.
I move to approve the amendment to the attached Mid-Management Professional and Technical Resolution, Appendix A, effective March 25th, 2019, as presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Abbott?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Okay, we'll move on to 9.5, and this is you again, Mindy. Presentation, discussion, and possible approval to amend Appendix A in the executive resolution, updating the classification and compensation system following review by HAY. The estimated cost of general fund is $0 in FY '19.
So this agenda, Mindy Falk, Human Resources Manager, for the record, this agenda is related to the prior one. The only difference is this is the position reviewed in the executive resolution, which was the Financial Services Director. This position went up two levels from the original leveling. There is no financial impact this year because the merit review isn't between now and July 1st. So that's why there's zero this fiscal year.
Okay. Any questions from Mindy? Charlene, Ms. Bybee?
Will you make a motion?
Go ahead.
Okay. I move to approve the amendment to the attached executive resolution, Appendix A, effective March 25th, 2019, as presented by staff.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Mr. Anderson?
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes, you can answer. Thanks, Mindy.
Thank you.
Okay, there are no public hearing action items. We'll move on to planning and zoning public hearings and action items. 11.1, the doctor's in the house. Consideration and possible approval of a request to amend the final approved plan, the Pioneer Meadows Development Standards Handbook, for a site approximately 640 acres in size, generally located east of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, west of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development, and south of the Zone Book west of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development, and south of the Stone Brook Plan Development. You're up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jonathan Cummins, planner. Uh, PCN eighteen dash zero zero six nine is a request to amend the final approved plan for the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development Handbook. Pioneer Meadows is a six hundred and forty acre site, as you were describing, uh, it's east of Kylie Ranch Northwest of Wingfield Springs and south of Stone Brook. It's outlined in cyan in this image. Uh, Pioneer Meadows was originally, uh, the, the original handbook, excuse me, was originally adopted by the city council in two thousand. It's since been, uh, amended three times. This will be the fourth amendment to the handbook. A little bit more recent background, on January twenty-eighth of this year, the city council certified changes to the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, which impacted the Pioneer Meadows Plan Development, uh, so the applicant is proposing to make some changes to the land uses within their handbook in order to reflect those changes to the comprehensive plan. Uh, some of the changes, uh, to, to run through just a couple of quick bullet points, um, will be to change densities, tables, um, the maps, of course, that reflect the land uses, remove the N S S O I North Sparks Sphere of Influence Plan references in the handbook, it's no longer in effect, also to make some other sort of housekeeping administrative changes to the document. Um, but the majority of the changes come from, uh, the changes which will be sort of reflected here, and I'll, I'll show you a little bit of the background of the changes to the comp plan to refresh your memory. The, the small sliver in the north center of the, of this, of the Pioneer Meadows here on the image in blue, um, and it's not extremely easy to see, but this top piece here in green was up until last year designated as CF for Community Facility. That site was going to be where there would be a school and then a small park. Um, the Washoe County School District had five years after the original adoption of the handbook to acquire the site and build a school on it. That five-year period lapsed, the school district waived their right to acquire the site for a school, and it's now, um, being proposed that it be sort of reverted back to single-family housing, which was originally outlined in the handbook in two thousand. Um, on top of that, with the removal of the school site, there was also intended to be three small parks in Pioneer Meadows. Um, with the removal of this site and its reversion back to single-family housing, there will be two larger parks in Pioneer Meadows, and that also conforms with the Parks Department's current policy of building larger parks rather than more smaller parks. Um, so, the Sparks Planning Commission made the following ten findings required for amendments to Plan Development Handbooks. Finding A requires that, that the amendments be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and any other applicable laws. Um, on top of finding that it was consistent with the comp plan, also, the planning commissioners found that, uh, the amendments will contribute to goal HG two of the Sparks Comprehensive Plan to provide a stronger housing market. Finding B requires that the amendment be consistent with surrounding land uses. We're not proposing any new land uses here, we're rearranging some and taking some out. Finding C requires that the amendment be fiscally positive to the city. The site in question, uh, the one outlined in cyan in this image, is ten point six acres, so therefore it doesn't meet the criteria to require a fiscal impact analysis. Finding D requires that the amendment further the mutual interest of residents and owners in the plan development. The planning commission found that these changes aren't going to affect anything that would, uh, excuse me, deter the mutual interest of being met by all the residents in the plan development. Finding E requires that the amendment not impair reliance of residents on the original handbook. Planning commission finds that these changes are basically a rearrangement of land uses and won't do that. Finding F requires that the amendment not adversely affect the public interest. Uh, by conforming to the comp plan as well as the original Plan Development Handbook, um, these changes will not be detrimental to the public interest. Finding G requires the amendment is consistent with the preservation of the plan development, and in fact, these proposed changes are intended to preserve the original intent of the plan development. Finding H requires that it not adversely affect the enjoyment of land abutting the plan development. Uh, the street networks and the general land uses and, and the organization of, of land uses here are not going to change. Residents of Pioneer Meadows will still have access, same access onto and off of the, the larger site. Finding I requires that the amendment not grant solely, granted solely to confer, uh, excuse me, private benefit upon any one single person. Um, planning commissioners found that the proposed amendments would intend, be intended to benefit current and future owners alike. Finding J requires public notice be given and a public hearing held. Uh, notice was mailed to the eleven hundred and seventy-three residents and owners of the Pioneer Meadows on January twenty-third. Um, on January twenty-fourth, the public notice was published in the Reno Gazette-Journal for the February seventh Planning Commission meeting where this item was originally heard and public hearing held. So with that, the planning commissioners are recommending approval, and I'll be glad to take your questions.
Okay, questions or comments? This is a public hearing item, let me open up the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, bring it back to the council for action. Mr. Dare.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Okay.
I move to amend the final approved plan, the Pioneer Meadows Development Standards Handbook, for a site approximately six hundred and forty acres in size, generally located east of the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development, west of the Wingfield Springs Plan Development, and south of the Stone Brook Plan Development, Sparks, Nevada, in the PD Plan Development Zoning District, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report.
Okay, we have a motion. Looking for a second, Ms. Bybee.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion to second. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Thanks, Honorable, appreciate it. Okay, I'm going to open up the public comment period. Anybody in the public wanting to speak at this time? Nothing, Bill? Okay, seeing none, bring it back to the council. Comments from the mayor, city council, and city manager? Um, Mr. Anderson.
Want to, uh, let everyone know that, uh, Mayor Smith, uh, committed our city to, uh, the mayor's challenge. So what we've got are several cities around the country that have, uh, committed to zero veteran suicides. So what we're doing is, uh, Councilman Dare and I will be representing the city along with, uh, some of our fine, uh, community members from Truckee Meadows, uh, different, uh, groups from Reno, Remza, uh, Washoe County, and, uh, so we're going to be collaborating to see what we can do to, to end the, the horrible, uh, numbers that we're seeing on veterans that are committing suicide. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Welcome. Thank you, you guys are doing a good job. He's leaving for DC tomorrow, right?
Yes.
Big conference back there for four days. Mr. Dare.
I just want to again remind everybody, if you just got online, you're watching this, that, uh, we have our groundbreaking on Friday, and it's on the west side of the, of the Sparks Marina for the Nevada Veterans Memorial, and we want to invite everybody out. This is a great time. I've heard, I believe, kids are on spring break, so you can bring your kids down, and it's a family event, it's going to be an awesome thing, and I think, uh, from what I hear, there's three hundred vests, for the first three hundred people come, they get a cool gift, so be the first three hundred.
You get a couple of cool gifts, actually, yeah.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, any other comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, without objection, we are adjourned.
Like, whoa, sorry. Um, I'd like to call to order the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of Monday, March twenty-fifth, with a roll call.
Chairperson Bybee?
Here.
Agency members Abbott?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Anderson?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Dare?
Here.
Chief Legal Officer Adams? Chief, Chief Administrative Officer Crutz?
Here.
We have a court, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Um, moving on to item three, public comment. Do I have any public comment? Seeing none, I'll close public comment. Number four, uh, Agenda four point one, approval of the agenda, possible action. Do I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Uh, motion by Agency Member Smith, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Agency Member Abbott. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Uh, item number five, minutes, consideration, discussion, possible approval of the minutes of the Sparks Redevelopment Agency Meeting of February twenty-fifth, two thousand and nineteen. Do I have any changes, corrections, additions, or a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve by Agency Member Smith. Agency Member Dare? Second by Agency Member Dare. Please vote. Motion carries unanimously. Item six point one, business items, consideration and possible acceptance of the report of the claims and bills approved for payment and appropriation transfers for the period of February seventh, two thousand and nineteen through March sixth, two thousand and nineteen. Have a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Um, Agency Member Dare, motion to approve. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Uh, Agency Member Abbott, second. No discussion, please vote.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item number seven, comments from the public. Do I have any comments from the public? Seeing none, close that. Seven point two, comments from the agency and Chief Administrative Officer. Any comments? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned.